Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar, together with my co-host, Mark Lornet of Statewide News Service, chabistickfellow.com, and now columnist for The Jewish Press.
I'm having a lot of fun doing all three assignments, and my column in The Jewish Press talks about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. But someone who does relate to the Jewish community is our guest today, Carmela Mantello. She is now the president of the Troy City Council, so welcome back to The Jewish View. You were here before under a different title, but welcome back to The Jewish View.
Shalom, and thank you for inviting me, and it's nice to be here. You're doing wonderful work.
Thanks.
How's Troy doing? That's the big question.
You know, I love Troy, as you know. I've lived there my whole life, and, you know, my mom and dad still live in Troy, so we're generational. My dad grew up in South Troy, and I'm raising a family in Troy, so Troy's fantastic in terms of the love, the uniqueness. The downtown is on a resurgence.
Yeah, definitely. It's on a boom area.
And you live in the Sicoe Way neighborhood, right?
I live in the Sicoe Way neighborhood, which is Hoozick Street area, which I avoid at all costs. Hoozick Street is a mess.
Well, we have Temple Beth El on Hoozick Street.
It's right around the corner from my house.
Oh, okay.
And I love New York pizza.
That's right.
My son is a partner of -- no, just because he eats so much pizza there.
He invests.
Yes. He's an investor.
But, you know, the Lansingberg area, I was surprised that the county executive lives in the Lansingberg area. But, you know, what's going on there? It seems like that place is like one neighborhood falling apart, but other people say it's -- yeah, but other people say it's not. I mean, you hear about a fire, you hear about the water, the pipes breaking, you hear about not just fires, but burglaries and people being beat up, and, I mean, if you listen to the media, which I don't --
You are the media.
You are the media. Don't say that.
But the mainstream media, no, you know, you would think that everything is going to hell in a handbasket.
Well, a couple things. As the rabbi mentioned, as the rabbi mentioned, that the downtown is being revitalized, and, you know, tens of millions of dollars from 10, 15 years ago. It didn't happen overnight. We need to take that momentum and bring it to the neighborhoods, whether it be North Central, whether it be Lansingberg or South Troy, who have really been hard hit by just the economic times and transients, unfortunately are moving into Lansingberg and South Troy, and unfortunately, some of those folks don't take pride in their neighborhood. We have a number of vacant buildings, over 600 vacant buildings. You know, the zombie property effort with the attorney general and the governor and others, and we have a land bank. Hopefully, we'll try to get our neighborhoods back on track, but once again, we need a government that's proactive, and I think over the last four or five years, you know, we've seen a government that's been reactive. We've seen Lansingberg, where I actually grew up. I'm an alumni of Lansingberg High School, and, you know, my dad, retired police officer, when he was a cop, he would drop me north Lansingberg, and we would walk 10, 15 blocks, hang out with our friends, not be afraid to walk in the dark. Heck, now, people are afraid, in certain parts in the burg and in North Central, to walk during the day.
Walk during the day, not just at night.
Right. So we don't want fear mongering, but certainly, Lansingberg has really taken a toll. However, we have neighborhood associations in Lansingberg and South Troy and in North Central who are really committed to bring back our neighborhoods. It's been a mantra, it's been a priority of the city council. We just approved recently over 12 properties to be demolished. They're non-rehabable.
So how much does it cost to demolish a house?
Over a million dollars. So you're talking for 12 properties, 1.1.
No, no, each property.
Each property, it depends on the property, on the asbestos.
But it's about $100,000.
Things like that. But you're talking 100 to, yeah.
The cost of the home.
Yeah, exactly.
Or sometimes more than the cost.
More than the cost.
Cost of the home.
But, you know, but it's a concentrated effort. You know, it's code enforcement, it's our police force, it's our fire department, it's the city council, the administration, all working together. And Lansingberg, North Central, and South Troy need to be targeted areas, block by block, and we can do this, but it's going to take time.
How come other administrations haven't been able to do this?
I think it's been a matter of priority, Mark, I really do. If you look at the downtown, I mean, look at the downtown 10, 15 years ago, it was nowhere where it is today. And that was a concentrated effort of not just money, but the desire and the proactiveness of our police force and others to merge our efforts and really tackle the growing issues.
It's just part of the times also. I mean, I don't know, maybe you can answer, but, you know, like, I know Brooklyn more than, I think we lived there, my kids lived there, and all of a sudden, it's like the place to be.
Exactly.
And 30, 40 years ago, "Rabbi, you're taking me to a prayer, because that's our headquarters." "You're trying to kill me over here?" Like you say, walk down a bad street.
Right.
And now, as you hide, you can't even buy a garage for a million dollars.
Right.
So, you know, same thing with Troy.
It can happen.
You know, but that's what I'm saying, maybe the good people, you know, that people have jobs, will just keep moving in. That's what happened in Brooklyn, and saying, "Hey, it's a nice place to be, it's near the river."
Sure.
I mean, you surely have a resource there. People always like being near the water.
Right. And as you know, the waterfront is very near and dear to my heart. My days at the Greenway, Albany to New York City, kayaking Albany to New York City, and, you know, them being afforded.
You kayak all the way here?
I did. I did. 150 approximately miles. It took 10 days.
Really?
It was an absolute thrill of the lifetime. I mean, if you've never done it, put it on your bucket list, to see the water.
But I tell my wife, she may take me there.
There you go. Even if you go for a day or two, but there's kayak trips that people set up for you, and, you know, they'll chart it out, so you can go with, obviously, the channel and the current, and it's just a magical, magical trip. I mean, each section of the Hudson River, which really is a natural treasure right in our backyard, and, you know, we take it for granted sometimes, but to be on the Hudson River for 10 days, and to see the municipalities from the water in a kayak is something very, very special. And then I was afforded to go to the canal system and oversee the canal, and I kayaked the canal through some of the locks.
How far did you go?
And that certainly is, I only did probably three or four locks on the Champlain, on the Champlain. So, you know, there's so much that we have to appreciate in Troy, in the capital region, and once again, we need to remember to not take that for granted and take advantage of these natural resources. But Troy's waterfront is approximately 78 miles, seven to eight miles.
What waterfront?
Along the waterfront, Troy.
Troy. That's a lot.
It is, and we don't have 77 to contend with, like Albany.
And you don't have oil tanks to contend with.
Well, not oil tanks, but we have commercial shipping happening up and down the river, which is a huge plus. But we don't have the oil tanks.
You have restaurants on the waterfront.
We do, and we can have more. And that goes back to what you were saying about Brooklyn, Rabbi, is, you know, Troy has the potential to really capitalize on the waterfront, on just the uniqueness, the character, the architecture, the history, the home of Uncle Sam. I mean, we have so much, and it's really targeting neighborhoods and really concentrating.
You know, Mark, I really, because we're on The Jewish View, that we have, I mean, you talked about Beth El, but there are three synagogues, and one of them is Beth Phil on 82 River Street, and Roll Label Morrison is in charge of these, the president, and he went out there 30 years ago, and it's like almost incredible when I'm listening to you, because, like, listen, you know, 30 years ago, Troy was really the dump, and, you know, now it's all of a sudden become the place to be, and the rebbe told them, I mean, it's such foresight, you're talking with someone who has prophecy, he says, "There's a whole world in Troy."
Oh, yeah.
And people, even the other people, "What are you talking about? It's a dump."
Right.
All right, the rebbe said it, and now, you know, we don't have that vision, and, you know, it's like what you're saying is, just that vision, now you could really see it, that it's become a really place to be.
Yeah, and, you know, just take that momentum downtown and spread it to the neighborhoods, and it can happen, and it goes back to the old, "Oh, we can do it." I mean, so, you know, some people do like to be naysayers. We have so much potential in this city, and if we can do it downtown, which you said, 20, 30 years ago, the atrium killed the downtown, everybody was going to our malls, now everybody wants to be in a walkable downtown. We need to spread that momentum to North Central, to Lansingberg, to South Troy. We can do it, and we have incredible, incredible potential.
And you're repurposing the Uncle Sam atrium. You're repurposing it. You got the Department of Labor in there, you have other stores in there that are not missed.
Just even people in commercial. We know our friend is Seth Rosenblum, and he bought a --
Yes, the Troy Records.
Yeah, and now he's making into what apartments or condos, whatever, the people and people are trying to.
You know Seth?
I don't, but I will meet him. Thursday's the grand groundbreaking for the former Troy Records, so it's perfect timing.
Oh, really? Thursday, what time?
Thursday at 10:30.
Okay.
So they'll break ground, and --
Mark, you're a reporter on the scene.
See that? Mark will be there.
Hopefully Seth will come on the show.
And that would be great. That would be a great guest. I will.
I wanted to also let people know that you're a board member at Lakes to Locks Passage.
I am.
And tell us what Lakes to Locks Passage is.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like I know what it is, but tell us.
I'm sure you know what it is, Mark, but it extends all the way from the Canadian border, all the way down through Troy, and almost into the Hudson River Valley. It ends where the Champlain Canal begins, so right around the federal lock in Troy, which, the 100th anniversary of the federal lock of the Army Corps, which is located right in Troy. A little history there. We're actually celebrating that, the beginning of August, the 100th anniversary. But back to Lakes to Locks, it's an organization comprised of all of the counties that border the Hudson River going up the Champlain Canal, and it's essentially, it's an organization of all volunteers, but once again, an organization much like the Erie Canal National Heritage Corridor, where it's all about interpreting, marketing, the significance of the cultural, historical resources along the Champlain Canal.
So it's not just the New York counties, it's the Vermont counties also.
That's correct. They partner with many of the Vermont counties, and we go all the way up to the Canadian border, but it's all about --
Right, but you don't go as far down as Massachusetts.
That's correct.
So it's only Vermont.
That's correct.
And Chris Bennington, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just let you, just to let the viewers know that you were on your Facebook page, when you heard about this 100 communities with the worst zombie home problems that can apply for the funds, your immediate reaction was, "Maybe Troy can get some of this."
Absolutely. And any and all grants that are available, we are there. We applied for the $10 million downtown revitalization initiative. We're one of the 100 communities, as I mentioned earlier. We have a number of zombie properties in the city of Troy.
Right, but you have been approved as one of the 100 communities?
We are. We're one of the eligible communities. Now we have to apply for the funding.
Okay.
And so they listed Troy as one of the communities, so now what I'm saying is, "Let's apply for the maximum amount, try to get some of these dollars to address, you know, 600 blighted buildings."
It's state dollars, right?
It's a lot. Absolutely, yeah.
Now, who's in the Senate representing Troy? Neil Breslin, right?
We have two. We have Senator Marchionne, who has a sliver. She is actually north Lansingberg.
Oh, she does.
Which she mentioned earlier, so a tough, tough district. And then the majority is Senator Breslin, and then Assemblyman McDonald, Assemblyman McLaughlin, Sharrett in the assembly.
Well, you'll see how effective Senator Breslin could be in the Senate minority.
Well, you know, they create partnerships, and hopefully, November, we'll see what happens.
Well, you're hoping the Republicans stay in control, don't you?
That would be a good thing. That would be a good thing, Mark, yes.
Full disclosure, you do work for the state senate.
Full disclosure, I do work for the state senate.
For Senator Vendito, who's a Long Island Republican, new.
Yes, very young, mid-30s.
Well, I don't mean he's new.
Yes.
I mean, he's new to the senate.
He's a freshman, both. Both. He's a freshman and he's new. He's one of the youngest.
Yes, he is.
He is.
So what do you do for the senate?
I'm an analyst, so I work on legislation, resolutions, much of what I did many years ago before I ended up going over to the Canal Corporation, Hudson River Valley, Greenway.
And where did you do that, when you worked?
I worked for the state senate back in the late 80s and during the 90s. A Westchester senator, yeah.
Name?
Oh, Nick Spano.
Nick Spano?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark's been around for two years.
I will say that.
But the other thing is, Nick Spano went and spent some time behind bars. He's one of those, what do they call it, legislative --
Bad apples.
Bad apples, yes, legislated bad apples, but that's okay.
His brother is mayor of Yonkers, and, you know.
Yes, Mike Spano, former Assemblyman.
Yes, doing a great job.
But Nick is back lobbying, he doesn't go away.
He's working hard.
Well, hardly working, right? No, no, no. But anyhow, when you're saying, "Why are you saying all this?" Troy City Council President.
Yes.
Is this a dream job for you?
It's an honor to give back to your community.
Are you living the dream?
I am living the dream every day of my life, every minute, Mark. You know, it's a dream job when you talk about giving back to your community, and I have so many years in public service, and I also was in the private sector for three and a half years, but I am born and raised in public service. You know, my mom and dad, my mom worked for a hospital, my dad, a police officer, and I think it's in my heart, it's in my blood, and, you know, that one thank you can get rid of the 10 or 15, you know, naysayers in one day, and just that one thank you for recycling bin or code enforcement issue that you addressed, or even getting a pothole where people are curving around the pothole and driving up on somebody's lawn to avoid it. I mean, those are the issues, and to be able and to be afforded, and I'm very honored and humbled that the people of Troy elected me as the top vote getter, to be their representative, and to have a new majority. I have a majority of five other colleagues, and from day one, we're doing more with less. We cut our budget in the city council. We hired an independent auditor, it was the first time in years that the council took the bull by the horns. We're facing, as you know, the state comptroller has warned us about our finances. We could end the year with a deficit, $2 to $3 million. So it's our job to hold the administration and the mayor accountable. We've done that from day one, but at the same time, we're partnering, and we understand the people of Troy, they don't want to hear the bickering, they don't want to hear the Republican, Democrat, they just want to see their government work for the people.
Now, we had the mayor of Troy on.
Great.
And he was a blank, not enrolled in any party, and his sister's a Republican, and he chose to be a Democrat. And I asked him why, and he said, "Well, because the enrollment, you know, there are more Democrats than Republicans."
He's no dummy.
But you're running, but, I mean, he just, I don't think the label, the party label, matters to him, and I think the expression, "There's no Democrat or Republican way to pave roads or remove snow," really takes, embodies him, and what he --
But how does it work, though, in Troy? You say he's a president, was that an elected official?
I am, yep. How it works is --
She's elected to the council.
Correct.
And the fact that you got the most votes, you become president.
Makes you the president.
Correct. You have a number of people run at large, and as you know, last year, it was fairly complicated because the Democrats had the third faction, so we had, like, 12 people running for three seats. And it narrowed down to nine people eventually, but I was able to get the top votes, including over tapping the mayor. I got more votes than the mayor.
And that's amazing, and, you know, and the fact that you didn't want to run for mayor, maybe you're thinking you should have.
Some people wanted me to. Everything's timing and the party, you know, they wanted a particular person. I could have primary, but quite frankly, I think it would have gotten just really bloody, really nasty. I don't think it would have been for the benefit of the people of Troy, so I took a step back, I threw my hat in the ring to run for council at large.
Now the party is licking their wounds that they don't have a Republican in the city hall, aren't they?
Well, you know, and the other thing, a lot of people know, I'm also a little rebellious at times. I mean, you know, we all know there's policy in politics, and I truly believe if you want to be an effective leader, you have to know how to distinguish the two. And you can't play politics all the time. Sometime political parties want you to, but you have to know enough when to say, "This is policy," which is 98% of the time, and then there's 2% politics, so, you know.
I could see, the day after Election Day last year, you were probably going, "No, no, 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 I could have been mayor."
I would never do that, Mark. I would never do that, Mark. You bite your tongue.
You know, but inside, you will probably, you know.
Well, and so many people, you know, had said that, but, you know, things happen for a reason.
Yes, they do.
I truly believe that.
I always say that, yes.
And, you know, even me here today.
Happen for a reason.
Exactly, exactly, yes.
But I just wanted to, so, we should say Jim Gordon ran for mayor, and he was a former councilman at the time, but anyway. Did you find it tough running against Rodney Wiltshire?
Rodney ended up running for mayor, so he stepped out, he had to relinquish his council president.
Okay.
You know, the mayor's race was probably one of the most vicious personal races I've seen in my lifetime, and even though I'm only, you know, 25 years old, I feel like I've been around for so many years, but I started at such a young age.
Yes.
I feel like I've seen so much in politics, and even being in the state, I don't think I've ever seen it as personal as it did this last year in Troy. So I am hoping, moving in the future, you know, it sounds naive, but, you know, people really need to respect people's personal lives.
Yeah, because Madden and Wiltshire are both Democrats.
Correct.
And they ran in a primary, and Wiltshire got beat pretty badly.
He did, he did, and, you know, then Madden, Gordon, that got very vicious, you know, but seeing that, you know, running positive races have something to say for themselves, I believe in them, and, you know.
So can you get, I mean, you're good friends with Kathy Jimeno, the county executive, and I believe you're good friends with her?
Friends, yeah, yeah.
Friends, okay.
No, Kathy, I consider one of my mentors at a young age, yeah.
And then, but her brother is now the head of City Hall, he's the mayor, so are you getting along?
It's tricky. It's tricky, and, you know, I'll give you an example. I threw it out there, if you recall, each of the surrounding counties by Schenectady County receive some of the casino funds from the licensing. You're talking a one shot to the tune of close to $1 million for Rensselaer County alone. So I threw it out there, you know, spaghetti on a wall, we're facing a financial crisis, and I threw it out there, maybe split the close to $1 million between the municipalities, like you do the sales tax, the county sales tax, and maybe split those monies, and Troy might be able to receive some of those funds, and the county exec immediately shot it down. You know, but the mayor, who, you know, I think needs to remember sometimes that he's representing the city of Troy, actually defended the county exec's decision about that, so that was a little tricky, and I think he could have played that one a little differently because, you know, our job, no matter what, is to represent the people of Troy, and to get every penny, every dollar to, you know, relieve whatever burden we can relieve on the taxpayers of the city.
You know, you're talking about the budget, Seth, it's interesting. I did ask the mayor this also, you know, because of the revitalization of Troy, you'd think that there would be more money flowing in.
I know, I know, and, you know, it's, you know, the revitalization's happening downtown, and we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in terms of the property tax and things like that, but in terms of the whole of the city, it's not having as huge an impact. You know, we're seeing a little bit of an economic boost, but it's indirect. It's to the restaurants, to the tourism efforts, and, you know, to the businesses, but in terms of the direct impact to the city budget, it's not as substantial as you would imagine, you know, because right now, our neighborhoods need that influx. We need to see more homeowners. Our census dropped down a little bit again, so, you know, things like that are --
Can people live in Troy?
We were over 50, we just hit a little below 50 this last round, so, you know, so
It's a slow process.
It is. It takes time. It does, it does, and, you know, I'm optimistic. I didn't leave Troy, had opportunities. It's my hometown, and, you know, I'm just honored to be head of the council in a period where we can have an impact on the future.
And you think you can make an impact?
Absolutely.
Can you do, see, you had three years with Barton and La Judas, so you had that private sector experience. Can you get more cooperation from privates, from the private sector, whether it's for naming rights? I mean, you don't necessarily need to call that atrium the Uncle Sam atrium.
Right.
Maybe that could be another, whether Troy Record Center, we have a Times Union Center, maybe it could be, you know, is there a way of working something out where you can bring in more money by naming rights on some of the buildings?
Absolutely. When we hired the independent auditor that I mentioned, we charged this auditing firm, independent, non-political, to come up with a corrective action plan, which were required by law under the New York State Comptroller's audit. So we had to come up with this capids clause, corrective action plan. What we asked the outside auditor was to look at just that, innovative ways to not only raise money, but partnerships and public-private partnerships in One Monument Square. You've probably heard, an incredible parcel on the waterfront. Unfortunately, the Kirchhoff Company pulled out of that, or fortunately, because they really did substantially change their original proposal. So it might have, you know, been a blessing in disguise to allow us to develop a new RFP that captures the waterfront, more public access, and potentially, more of a public-private partnership. City Hall, we're right now on a floor, we're leasing City Hall over $350,000 a year. Well, we've been there already since, my gosh, 2011, so you're talking five years, that's over $1.5 million. Could we develop a public-private partnership, have a multi-use type of development at One Monument Square? Sure.
So it's in the Hedley Building, so?
Correct, on the fifth floor.
So there is a Mr. Hedley?
Yes, but he has retired, yes.
He used to own a car.
The car dealership, which is right next door to the Hedley Building.
So I'm saying, you know, couldn't he do something in terms of, you know, having his name on some of the buildings and give back, in that way, he'd be giving back some of that money back to the city?
Yeah, he's retired somewhat, but, yeah, but just the, absolutely. And, you know, and that's one of the ideas mentioned, okay, how can we share services more? How can we, you know, we have a number of property that's tax-exempt, whether it be RBI, Emma Wellard, Hudson Valley. Can we create a better partnership, which has been talked about for years? Well, guess what? Other municipalities have. Stephanie Minor has done great work up in Syracuse. We can actually look at other municipalities on things that they've done, whether it be naming rights, whether it be sharing services, and I've traveled across the state, so I know some of the opportunities that are present that we're not capitalizing on.
And Conference of Mayors might be able to be helpful, not just to the mayor, but you too, because I know that there are coming --
Absolutely.
-- city council people who do come to the mayor's, because they say, "Other municipal officials," at the end of their title.
Right. Yeah, it's mayors, and somebody had said, "Well, why is Carmela there?" Well, there's a lot of local officials who aren't mayors who are part of nine colonies.
And I wanted to, you know, in Albany, Mayor Sheehan is asking Albany Med to give tax pilot money back to the city, because hospitals are tax-exempt.
Yes.
Maybe you could do that, I know the St. Peter's group has --
Absolutely, yes.
-- St. Mary's or whatever used to be up in Samaritan.
Yep, Samaritan, St. Mary's have all become part of the foundation of St. Peter's Health Partners.
So, couldn't you, like, petition them to do what Albany Med's doing for Albany, for City Law?
Absolutely, absolutely, and it doesn't hurt to ask, and we really haven't yet, and, you know, we need to develop these.
I'm here to help.
There you go. Come on in, Mark, come on in.
He's the rabbi over there, and he wants to ask him for donations over there. That's my job, asking for donations.
Well, let me ask you, we, since we're running out of time, is there anything we didn't know enough to ask you about that you'd like to bring up and mention, because